Like the call for order be. It's February twentieth. Meeting of Swan Planning Commissions at eleven four four A M. Swan Town Office. Um, agenda reviews first.
We need to add um. A email, an email about grants from Heidi Bridge Collective from the Village of Swanton.
I need people. I'll put that um under agenda, under re- um review and meeting minutes, I'm gonna put that.
You'll make that number three or number four?
Three B. Or whatever, I'll make it three B.
Okay.
Heidi. Heidi's M A D grant. Swanton Village. Not M A D, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Swan Village um. Meeting use review, set meeting date, I know Heather's not here, but I would like to give the drift from you guys, well. Completely. We should be trying to find a. A common time that maybe works better, but maybe we. Just keep plugging through until we fill in some vacancies later this summer or something like that.
Oh, for a completely change this?
I don't know. Yeah. I don't know how many more meetings we're really gonna have coming up.
Well, I.
Once Cory is.
My vote is that you. You'll after this Cory can give us the public hearing timeline and then the select bar.
Yeah. Yep.
If you've wrapped it up.
I would say we're close. Evening Jim. You got no work today?
I think we've got a little bit of more work to do unless we know exactly what Cory has got. In the program.
Okay.
And I got a few issues I would like to bring up.
Okay. No pros and. Congratulations, um, any other things to add?
No.
Review and approve meeting minutes, January twenty eighth. And then you have another thing.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting of January twenty eighth, July twenty five as. Yes.
Uh seconded.
The main and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say ayes.
Ayes.
Opposed, most in carries. I don't know number three B if you will, but. Uh, so um Swan Village is working um. To the D H C D, I don't know, D H C D. Um municipal planning grant um. Signature from us. Uh, the application is for twenty thousand dollars. Do a cost benefit analysis, the best option for relocating cross county. Power lines from Companal to Route seven.
But that is high gate.
But it's Swan Electric.
Okay, so that's why you need it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. My assumption would be. What has to do with the town state, the village is taking out a grant. Applying for a grant. Because they probably own the infrastructure and they would like our support, um.
Hmm, yeah.
But where it comes to Route seven might go through. Well, that's.
Who's lines there? This is not part of the. Delco project or?
No, I I got a feeling this is not low voltage, but um.
Well, I just I'm curious, it says cross.
Seven take payments.
Maybe it comes through Swan at some point. Big call, you want my caller?
Caller and asker.
They're high gate springs.
That the Com- Com- Companal Road goes from. It's all, the whole road is in high gate, so it must be worth the conversation. It goes from St. Armin to Carter Hill, all high gate.
Right. Yep. Yep.
My guess is because like you said, it's one infrastructure.
Yeah.
Hi, what's?
Hey Heidi, um, I got you on speaker, we're just sitting down at our P C meeting, um, reading your application here. Um, and just had a couple of quick minor questions. You got two seconds, um. So this is, does this run through Swanton? Or is it because the village is applying for it, you need our support? We're assuming it doesn't necess- it, does this go through Swan at all? We're trying to just figure that out.
Okay, so um backtracking, it is um a municipal planning grant, so there always has to be the approval of the planning commission. Of authority and and by Donald Swanton Town. Um, so it has no uh footprint in. The town or village of Swanton, it is from Campanal Road. In High Gate out to Route seven, High Gate Springs.
Yep.
Um, and it's just across country, so it's very vulnerable to branch. Destruction or you know, any sort of storm impact, it has a little more. Uh vulnerability because it's out there. And takes a little longer to clean up, so it's.
Yeah, that's uh. It's a weird, that line's weird because it cheats some of like Forton Road, but not all of them. Doesn't it? It cuts like through to the springs, doesn't it? Doesn't cross the interstate, it's not, it's, yeah, it's a weird line. Yep.
The. Uh scenario, Wayne just not like it very much, so he's put on his list for a while to do it.
Yep.
And we replied previously, but we didn't really have enough data to say what makes sense and.
Okay.
Encouraging things to go underground and you know, we don't have the data to say it's. Worth that extra money, so you know, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay, no, that was our assumption, but we just wanted to, a couple of the members were asking, so we figured we just try and give you a quick call and. Clarify, so yeah, we'll we'll sign off on this, if that sounds great, no big deal.
Excellent.
Okay.
So Heather, Heidi, will you just get your motion form?
Okay. Will I, Stacy?
You need a motion and a signature on a form, or what exactly actually do you need from me?
Ye- yes, um, the the, I sent a form with email.
Yep.
Um, and I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to fill it out yet, you're well, you're invited to to sign it and I can fill in your name after.
Okay. Okay.
I like, I have to put it in front of the trustees as well.
Okay, no problem.
Alright.
Thanks so much, Heidi.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. You too. I don't know where the line actually went, it goes down Fortons, goes right by Forton's farm, if I remember right, and it crosses the interstate.
What are they trying to do?
It's.
I understand like there's a line through the woods, but they still have to service all the towns.
I think it's move it's.
We need to know their. Well, that or like she said, they're trying to put it underground, but to be able to justify putting it underground for storm purposes, underground is. Way more expensive.
Yes.
So they're just doing a planning grant to do a cost benefit analysis to figure out the best way to fix it.
Oh, so that's great.
The grant is just the best way to.
It's not actually the pay to do.
No, they're look, they're applying for a twenty thousand dollar grant to to figure out the best way to fix it.
So the section they're trying to bury then is from Route seven. To Compton Road, uh, okay, I thought they were trying to like move the line, like how the heck are you gonna move line to all these houses that?
Yeah. No, it's High Gate Springs. From Companal area must be, but there's chunks of like Forton Road. Maybe Carter or Hill. Um, what's the road that goes by um? There's a very.
Yeah, like Cory, right?
There's sections that um.
Trying to save myself.
That aren't High Gate, aren't aren't Swan.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to sign that?
V C F A.
They're crying.
So you make a motion to sign that?
Uh, I sent a motion.
There's two pages here, do you only sign?
I think there, I think it was just, yeah, there's something about the chair.
Is the exact the case.
Name of planning commission chair, signature.
Yep.
But I gotta get a motion from my board to do that first.
I made a motion for the chair to sign the. The four, four support letter for the municipal resolution of.
Okay.
Alright, so I had a motion's been made and seconded by this company. Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye?
Aye.
Poses?
Here, Ross, sorry.
Oh yeah, yes, I have this printed this, the same page twice, it did print the back page. Um. So that's done, Cory's here now, um. Cory, you wanna do a a quick overview, how do you wanna get rolling?
Need some voice, unmute yourself. Yeah, I think that makes sense, how are you guys doing today? Sorry, I can't be there in person. Had to get a client in front of a few people at the State House here. Um, so I think. I think just to rehash, probably make sense of of the meeting we had, the joint meeting the other night, um. And kind of where we went on things, um. I I think it makes a, I think some points are brought up that are good and we made, I made some changes there. Um, one structural that didn't make a change, but I I thought would be some worth talking to, um. Is is the transportation um. Area and it cleared, the village has a plan there and I don't wanna mess up their brownfield funding. I know we were talking about getting rid of the transportation service area as a district, but I think we leave it in there after that meeting.
Yeah, now we're gonna take, do the overlap and figure out what's what and da da da. Um, I did have, so you know, um, some conversations too about a couple of properties that kind of pertain to that and came up with some. Just talked Christina a little bit, um, and some property owners have some ideas around some stuff that might support her. So.
So so that that was one area I made, um. Joel gave us a list of, uh, I'm just pulling it up now, Joel. Made a list of notes, um, we looked at them, we have notes from, um. From the village, uh, some of them we can, I can explain away pretty easy, some I think. Ultimate changes, we have Jim notes, um, I I incorporated those into our draft. I did talk to Regional Planning, finally got them. I'll draft the email, but the email's gonna have to come from the town of Swan and asking them for the request, so I can have that email drafted and then they'll make those changes. They just as a consultant won't. Have, won't make any changes for me, though Christine will have to send that email. Um. So I'll get that done. Today here and then um, I think just sign off on the language we have and then. Once we're good there, we just do the cleanup, make sure the charts all match, get the pictures formatted and then have our final. Hearing as a planning commission to send to the. To the select board.
We heard anything about maps? That's what he was talking about, the change.
Yeah, I've gotta have, the town has to request any change of maps, even though you guys have hired me and they know we're writing.
Then we met with them and said that.
No, so we'll, I'll, we'll just, I'll put together the email of what things are gonna look like, I got the map of the of the sewer lines and how we want it to match that. Our new residential district and then the ones we're combining. Um, I did wanna touch base on that transportation service area before we made the map. Because that that's the um. That's. That to me was one of the. Probably the biggest concern that, not concern, but. Point raised at the joint meeting that I was like, well, we as a group didn't think about that and. I don't wanna mess up any of the brownfield funding if they went at a level because there isn't gonna be housing in that district. The brownfield piece might be uh. Less than what what we built in, or than what, you know, they budgeted for and did, so. I think at a bare minimum, let them get through their project if it happens and then then we can change the district. If that makes sense.
You see a conditional use for housing in the other one, you brought that up?
Not yet, no, that's what I'm I'm scrolling through our texts right now, to base upon the conversation I had.
So he, one of the conversations Ross and I had, he had an inquiry for housing in.
Well.
The district on the other side of the interstate.
Industrial.
Industrial. Possibly putting that as conditional use because somebody wants to put housing in that area and right now it's not permitted.
So.
Yeah.
One of the things we talked, they talked about, instead of turning, um. We talked about a couple of things. One thing we talked about was this in particular, Jim, where we're talking is um, the office land, um, which is currently zoned industrial. Next with the Rousals also have a lot that is zoned industrial, but in my opinion may be a good opportunity for residential.
That's where we talked about the whole thing, and basically it hinges around. The village and they're running water and stuff that comes through there and.
In Heidi, I did talk to Heidi. The only thing that would have to stay industrial there. Is Hodgkins is included in that industrial district, district.
Well.
But there are the other side of the railroad tracks too.
Correct, now the other thought I had. Was instead of changing that industrial district over to a residential district or that area into residential. Because of the conversation with Adam Goss and the fact that. Um. Maple City is moving out of their building and part of that building is currently unoccupied and the entire building will be un- unoccupied. Does it make sense to put as a conditional use? Multifamily housing. Within our industrial district, so as opposed to singular units. It would open it up to multiple units, in my opinion, three or more, is that multifamily housing, would that be three or more Cory?
Four.
Anything about four or more?
Um. So I get where the conversation's going, industrial tends to be one of the ones where people do just don't put housing in because. An industrial zone lot, you know, we could put a quarry in there or we could. I I would. My recommendation would be you change the actual district. Map versus. Putting housing in industrial, I don't. I would have to look hard, but I don't think a single municipality allows housing of any type in their industrial districts. I'm not saying we don't reclassify the lands.
I I know what you're saying, the other thought is is that.
Cause then someone could buy a, that factory that Mylan used to be in and turn that into housing and maybe you want that, but. It it.
Multifamily, I would say not singular, you know, where my, where you.
Right, what you get into is health hazards and then you're never gonna have like an ep- economic. Manufacturing base. Uh, we could look at.
Sure.
Maybe redistrict some of those light industry.
That is industrial.
Yeah, I know, that's that's why, because.
At the beginning of it.
Core, because Adam had a tenant. Potentially for that building. For a dog room and that person supposedly came in and was told no. So that's another conversation.
So so we have commercial light industry. As a, as a district, maybe we we look to do that because you are allowed housing in commercial light industry. Um, but industrial, industrials where you build your factories, right? It's where you live.
Oh, sure.
So that is what a part of, I'm sorry, so.
The ratio.
So. Pink. Where are any awesome spots? So this is the road and it's pink on that side, so do you make that the commercial light? For part of?
I mean, that that was just an option where A- Adam and I were spitballing because there is quite a bit of. Housing are, if you know what we're talking about, according to Maple City, um.
Yeah.
There is quite a bit of housing around there and he said, you know, industrially it may be hard for me to sell this building, it's on the market. But maybe it's easier if someone was able to come in and put a. Twelve unit building or or convert this existing building into a whole apartment or something, so we were just. Talking and it and it. Align kind of with the other piece of property he has that's industrial as well, but sitting. In what could be easily considered a residential setting. Um, so, but I understand what you're saying about the industrial, um.
But I'm not saying we can't, I just think we're better off changing the map. Than adding to the industrial. Use, you know what I mean?
Your thoughts?
Another question, are you both on the same property here?
Yeah, I think we.
There's two properties Adam owns, there's the Maple City one and then he's got one up on the other side of the interstate behind Champlain Farms.
Yeah, okay, alright, Brian here.
They're two different industrial districts, so.
There, it's a similar district, there there, it's the same district, different ends of town, different. View, different, you know what I mean, um.
But it's two acre parcel, so at the end of the day, if you wanted to add housing, you could put how many houses in there Cory?
Well, multifamily was what he was talking about, like he asked.
Yeah, and you you even need water and sewer to get the density.
It is there.
It's there, that that's why.
There, so then on two acres theoretically, he could cut that into ten lots with four units at each lot, so that's forty units.
But the, in the conversation he was, we were talking about was like a large multifamily, you know, like Lower Newken was the conversation, he's like. Maybe it makes sense to get someone like that could tear the Maple City building down and put in a. Thirty unit apartment building on that corner, there's plenty of parking, there's water, there's sewer, there's gas. So that was the convers- I mean, we, he, there's nothing planned, it was just. We were having a general conversation about growth and. Those specific ends of town. Kind of thing, um. So I'm just, I'm I'm open to suggestions on the best way to skin the cat, I think for sure. Uh. The other side of the interstate, um. In my opinion, I I like the idea of going to commercial light.
And you would just do it on that side, that parcel between between law farm and La Boyo Valley Railroad Trail.
Um.
Just that.
Yeah, I was thinking Rousals and.
So.
But I, I also, I called and had a conversation with Brian Rousal.
Hey, you'd wanna talk to landowners, cause some like the industrial designation.
Okay, but uh, you could, you know what I mean, like what salary was that for?
I was gonna say, I would talk to the land, you know, the Rousals, Adam wants the change, but you'd wanna make sure they want the change too.
Yeah.
There's, is this on the other side of the road?
The Rousals, Rousals is out.
Rousals is actually out of law farm.
There's the one over there.
It's the.
They got.
By the railroad trail.
Yeah.
Before Hodgkins.
Rousals also got some on the north side of.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
That ain't certain, we have a piece on the south side.
But the north side isn't industrial.
No, that's right.
It's the south side that's industrial that I was kinda like.
I was just wondering if that's what it might have maybe got.
Railroad tracks.
Well, it's split by the road, dragon, also split by the.
Here's twenty, but Ross, that's twenty law farm, which is already. On that side of the tracks. It's it's a a.
Uh.
In a butt fifty three year far.
In a butts, yes, yeah.
So if you did, if you just squared that off, not a square, but.
That whole pie sheet, the only people, the only people that are gonna get.
Yeah, but people that want to um access that railroad trail, it's right there.
Is. I did right here, I I mean that, yeah, it is.
Can you hear it?
Absolutely.
Really?
What, is like a freight train going through?
What is that for?
Project ten or what?
It's like a black site backup for the power grid.
Yep.
Runs off diesel?
Diesel, yeah.
Like a giant jet.
That's where.
What is on about this? Oh, um, the only ones two that are kinda landlocked around this is Burgers.
That's what I'm concerned about is Burgers is what's kinda.
They're on both sides.
Can that go all the way around the line?
Yeah, it does go around Burgers.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, well, this shows it does, so see here, they connect, there's Rousals chunk.
Yeah.
They've been dumping a bunch of fill at Rousals and I think, so so Burgers, so um. So the horses.
Those are.
Are on Rousals land?
Those belong to, um.
They belong to Hodgkins, but they're on Rousals land.
Yeah, yeah.
They probably are.
Uh, you know, based upon this.
Yeah.
So tho- those generators are that loud?
Andy?
Oh, I can hear him.
Talk from the people.
Yeah, varies. I never know when they're gonna pick up.
She definitely has low. That's a backup system of the state of Vermont.
Yeah. Then they come on and. Come on and off, whatever they want, I guess, you know, uh, no matter what, they'll do it. They're low on, if they're low on power somewhere, they'll pick them on. I wouldn't wanna live, I live. I'm more or less ignoring where I'm living, okay?
Someone closer.
Someone closer is gonna water the hell out of them. Yeah.
Exactly the problem with. I don't know, it's a language down in on that partial land, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know.
Just make sure that's enough.
So so right now, we don't allow residential and the commercial, what was commercial light industrial, we just call it commercial district. We could add multifamily housing. To that district and then reclassify those lots as commercial districts.
Yeah, and the conversation we're talking about is there. I think we should, where is commercial district, you know, probably this way.
Pink.
I could share my screen and show you guys if.
They, no, the dark. So.
Commercial light this year.
This, this, so this, no.
No, this.
Yes. So the village.
Two rooms were down more in the village.
The village, the village.
This is commercial light industrial district. Does that still that's what I am? It's here.
I've only have been back there.
And here. Also there. You go to that.
No, this orange, that's more, so it's right there, right there.
Yeah, right here. Right here.
Right here, fromage.
That's where you go.
But here's the others, that's our plans, or let's see.
Right here is for stump.
Yeah, right here.
That trying newer piece or. So that could be commercial light, now there is. No, that's not any commercial light. That's all straight up industrial. Excuse me. I was near a road used to go through. Uh. Good. Well, I think we gotta table that for a little bit and get to work on some other stuff, or we won't get.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we. I I guess we need the map from Regional, but until we decide those things like. I don't wanna have them draw the map and then have us change it six times.
No, um.
I can send them an initial list or have Chris, put together an email to have Christina send initial list. And then invite them to a meeting as we work out these last few, so they know what. Specific.
We have add that as a use in that district. Like he talks about and I mean, yeah, the noise is annoying, but like it's already there, like people are gonna know.
But it's industrial now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we could change it to the commercial. And half the housing is. But like part of the. Conditional use could be like you have to tell people, this noise is. Is there.
Is it noise all, is it constant noise in there?
No, it's like just.
They turn it on and off whenever they need it. And Swan's. Stump building is right next to it, right next to the railroad.
This, this doesn't even show Robin, I go stump building through. This map sold.
You know how that other district go? Like we're making, is how, or those houses all there before zoning? Is that why they're they're?
Well, they're all zoning, yes.
But it's not even, those aren't even industrial, while they are there, and but it's classified as. Our five.
Yeah.
Until it gets to the pink, which is neighborhood like.
I also think as far as that project is concerned, if they actually get somebody that wants to do that, we can definitely address it then.
Actually. That could be neighborhood light.
We got rid of neighborhood light.
That's right, and turn that into commercial. Wait.
We should add how, I mean, that's a good point, we should have. Some level of housing and commercial and you you probably do anyway, cause if somebody ever like. I think like Mike Godson with the storage units and then has a building with like an apartment above it in San Alomans Town. We're in a housing crisis, it makes sense to. I. I'd like to have housing as many districts as possible, but understand that like in- industrial is just the one that I'm like. That's where you put. Your dangerous stuff and you don't want kids living next to it, you know what I mean? Not dangerous stuff, but. Air quality, you know?
Well, the other thought too, um, Cory was, um. Um. I wonder what the, uh, yeah, this is from Ovee, she's. Um. I wonder what the, um. City of St. Albans district is where they're putting up that building on Lower Newken? Or yeah, or.
They spot, they spotzoned that, but we can look at it, they, I mean, they just like that. That one lot just reduced their parking requirements, there's, there's probably a legal challenge in what they've done there at some point. I mean, to be blunt. Um, but they've.
Yeah, I'm just thinking there's the buildings that are around there and that was literally an industrial site. And now there's fifty units going in there, um.
Yeah, there's another, what they just proposed another seventy or something too.
Next door, so.
So, yeah, right, and that's it.
Okay, um, let's let's get back to some of our other stuff, I know Jim's got some stuff, I guess the map, we gotta find some, we gotta. I I would say. Make some changes, I would say let's just have Regional do the change that we've already talked about. And if we're gonna make changes, like I said, uh, I think we're gonna be making some other changes down the road. After this is all said and done, we'll do. Would be my guess, we're we're gonna get in the weeds and we're gonna add another six months to this project.
Yeah.
There's one thing I think we could address, maybe. Change here is the. District. The R one changing the recreational this conservation district. Over to R one, and the reason why I make that statement is. Is. This one here is going away. Already been decided, by my understanding.
Yeah.
So we have just this left here.
I.
And the thing is that this is R one. To coincide with the rest over here, this is your other, and there's a substantial amount of this that is in the land trust already.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, why have that little bit left? Because this is all recreational, or is the.
Refuge.
Yeah.
Refuge, and that, so I.
So we have, I thought we did get rid of that, no?
We talked about it, I agree, I I think. We could completely get rid of recreation conservation, turn it all into R one, we've got so much land in this community that is already preserved, that is accessible to people. We've got a housing crisis, like, I would say turn it all into R one. Make it easier, there's not really that much of difference between them either, I think if you.
No, if you look, if you look at.
We, we did not get rid of recreational conservation, happy to.
That, yeah, so we didn't, Corey, but what what Jim is saying and and I would agree with, I think we just get rid of all the recrea- recreation conservation. Put it in our residential non sewer and water district. You know, like, simplify, there's one more district. Because Hog Island, like he said, there's some big chunks out there that are in land trust, but there's a couple chunks that aren't. Let, you know, Ryan J's got some stuff out there, he's trying to expand and put some housing in. Let's, let's make it, make it a little easier if we can.
I'm gonna go grab a notebook real quick, because I'll take that note real quick.
Okay, Christina said there's a four on subdivision.
Yeah, so this one.
That must be run ins.
Mine's certain, doesn't lie to tell me.
Oh, there's one in progress.
There's one coming that's gonna start next month.
That's what I'm trying to.
Huh?
Or single family.
Maybe, yeah. They're just.
And that's not.
And currently that's three acres, that.
No, no. No, that's one acre.
No, recreation conservation is three acres minimum.
No, he's not in that, no, he's in here.
He's in.
He's in Shoreline?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's in Shoreline.
Because it's so many feet to the.
Yeah, so many feet.
But we're changing that too.
That's so many setbacks on that.
Right, but shore, that's so, what I'm getting at is that district.
That.
Shoreline I thought was gonna be the other side of the road.
It's. Well, it should be this whole thing, unless you narrow it right down.
Shoreline's two hundred feet from the water line unless there's a road there.
Yeah, so.
We're just gonna match this.
Currently, our shoreline district goes on the older side of Hog Island Road. Or whatever, what is that?
Yeah.
Lake, Lake.
On the other side of Lakewood, but my understanding was with these new biol, these new laws. It's now gonna be just to the road?
Yeah.
See, I didn't understand, I didn't know that.
What, so what district does he in?
He's gonna end up being in the.
He'll end up being in the, what we're gonna make now, our residential.
Which, which one affected?
Cause they're coming with a one and a half acre lots, that's what they're trying to do now.
Well, they, they'd only need to do one acre lots.
Well, but but if if we don't change that, we can't do that, because those are three acre minelots, right, and the recreation.
And we're, no, we're changing that one.
No, but if, that's what I'm saying, if we don't, if we don't change that one, it's three.
What is it right now?
Ah, I don't think it's three. Recreation conservation is three currently.
It's now would be covered French Hill, right?
It is. Well, it's three, then change to one, in the new bylaw, you're right.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we changed it to one, but it currently is three.
Yeah.
He's gonna start that project.
Well, he's bringing for the board, something that's based on the old shoreline.
Which he's gonna be okay, because he's losing his shoreline, but he's going into.
Well, what I'm wondering is if he, if he has a heads up, if he might change.
Like five units. Guessing with him, it's a four unit because of Act two fifty. Cause he just did another project on Rents Hill.
Who's that?
Dustin.
He's doing two more.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I guess.
Currently, this would be in.
It would be okay in the shoreline?
Yeah, that's the way it currently is.
Okay.
But my understanding was we were gonna go to, um.
Well, that'd be.
Let's talk about the side of the road.
Excuse me, the, um, that side of the road is now. I said, excuse me. Where's it gonna say, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, there is one.
Um, I'm just curious. Where do these cross from? I'm trying to figure out where, where those are.
Anyway, we're not at all.
Yeah, we're.
Keep going.
Wait a minute.
Why did you share it with you?
Huh? I'll, I'll call, I just texted Dustin to call, I'll call Dustin and get it, get the flavor of what he's doing. And see if there's any way we can, um.
Well, and if he wants to, with the new regulations, he could do four lots instead of three.
Well, that's what I mean, he's doing four, but if he.
He's doing four.
You can do five or six. If he has four, one and a half acre lots, he can do six.
Well, there's also a problem, could be a problem with water septic here too.
Septic.
Cause three of them are going on one septic and one is actually on its own.
That's right.
So I'm, I'm curious too, if it's a, if it's a.
And then this is wetlands back here, forest land and wetland.
That might be all you can do on that one.
But I thought the same thing, maybe the new.
They have a lot of their shoreline. Recreation conservation.
Yeah.
Who are the houses across from it?
There's up here, Air Tramways. There.
Then Liquid Drive, right? Yeah, around the house, down the road tone.
That's one forty four seven.
Um.
You know where I go.
Yeah, oh. Oh, it's. Now I, I know where I am now, okay, it's that field, it's next to O'Shea's, okay, now I know. Further, well, further. So I'm curious as to why he's just chopping it like that. Nah, um.
What are you needing, please?
Fromage.
Right, you're using, they're using three hundred. Now it's.
Those each have their own, everybody wrote it.
Two hundred. Two hundred. Yeah, see evidently, I think it has to do with the, uh, septic and everything, because. This one up here is using three hundred foot of road front, this is two hundred, this is about two hundred, and this one's over. Is up in the road up. Uh, uh, over three hundred. So I think it's got something to do with, you know, the dial types and septic.
Yeah, and does it show?
Through here.
Oh, it's got a community.
Two, then this here.
It's showing a community septic.
Well, yeah, that's for this one, this one, this one, and this one's got its own.
Yeah, yeah.
And that mean, I took a quick look at that, because I was marking it, it was a change issue.
Okay, pass this one.
Okay, keep moving.
Yeah, one acre, one acre, it's in here.
I, I think, Corey, I think we made an executive decision that, um. The road is shoreline. Um, and. And other side of the road is R one, and everything that is recreation conservation is now R one, residential. And I mean, I, that's my personal, I, if you guys are gonna vote, we can go on it, so it's clean.
I think it's.
On my.
For me.
Like you said, most of that, most of that is already conserved anyway, so it's not.
Same with French Hill, there's a ton of state land, there's Saint Albans Town Forest up there, there, there is.
Yeah, but I, I mean, even just that chunk though, if we change the district, that, well, half of it is still gonna stay.
Now, probably about a quarter if it's in the land trust.
It's land trust.
Hold on.
Maybe not quite a quarter, here's a.
But it backs up to the wildlife reference, you know?
Here, here.
That's land trust.
Here, your. District here, this is the part of.
Refuge.
Refuge, and then this is the open land, and this is conserve, they conserve there. So this is the only thing that's left, because this is R one, this is campground, this is campground, septic back up there, there's housing there.
Yeah.
Can you make some?
Yeah, I agree.
So they're, they're. Their track is, uh, conserve land there. Yeah.
Hmm.
And he's good.
Oh, Johnny's motorcycle is over the track?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
That might be on the campground land. That will.
Just right here, right?
Cross from the, cross from the, so those are the, um.
Okay.
We can hear, I think that's their, it's on.
Case, or.
On our way.
On occasion, land that he would grow.
Yeah. From the sale. Okay, um. I then entered in a motion to merge of, uh, recreation conservation into residential district. And put all of. The west side of Liquid Drive into shoreline rec. And the east side of Liquid Drive become residential district. So, um, just, just to make it clear.
And the south side of whatever that other road is.
French Hill.
No, the, other, what's the road that cuts across, is that Liquid?
Oh, yeah, it's still Liquid, yeah, yeah, I got you.
Is it still Liquid? Okay.
That road just continues.
All right, I make a motion to adjust. Um. Yeah. That is sure.
Was that clear, Corey?
Yep.
Uh, motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Made second, and any discussion, hearing none, those, uh, in favor, seek advice, sing aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed, motion carries, perfect, I, I think. Good for, oh, and we also included French Hill.
Where are you?
Where are you, that, that's perfect. Uh, moving on, Corey, I guess we can, now we can kind of, well, Jim, you got some other stuff?
I got some.
I got Jim, I've got Jim's list that was part of your notes that were sent over by Christina a few weeks ago.
He's got more.
Oh.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Oh, good.
Uh. Clarification of home occupation basically should almost be in every district.
Yep.
Uh, I don't believe it is in every district. Corey, I don't know what your thoughts are on that. Cottage industry is the same idea. Now cottage industry, if I understand cottage interest, industry. It is you have a residential house, but you have a separate building for. A cottage industry. Is that the right terminology? That's not a great definition, Rick.
Doesn't have to be a separate building, does it?
It does. It has to be a separate building.
Yeah.
Well, that would be.
Your basement is your office, and you got ten people who work down there, or five people, whatever the number is. Um. But it doesn't have to be a separate building, um. So. Yeah, or I think we just gotta tighten up definitions, because I mean, the reality is, is a lot of people work from home now and have a home occupation of some sort. I think this was obviously written in term of art before Zoom and. All this stuff, uh, that that's gone on, but I have no problem home occupation in every district where we allow homes. I think that's fine, that's just an easy add in. I, I think you wanna contemplate, and I guess I'm, I'm not looking at definition now. It, you consider home occupation like the lawyer who works out of their front room. Or the real estate agent who works out of their house. Versus, I, I guess what I would say is. We can write our definitions, home occupation is like the one person who works there, or maybe a spouse and couple. Where like the cottage industry would, in my mind, or we come up with a different phrase, is where employees come in to work there.
That's correct. But that's why a separate building, because it's basically, your home occupation is within the home, and it's usually they. I don't know, there's figures in different towns that say it's more like thirty percent is home occupation, is the use of the house. Then you go to a cottage industry, to me, is a separate building, separate from the residential. Where you have employees coming in and going to work.
So the one I think.
The Oxford dictionary definition for cottage industry is a business or manufacturing activity carried out in a person's home. In their home. So. I know, but I, I, I actually like that term, it's simpler. But I don't, you can't do the separate, I don't think the separate building thing applies now, because. If you're a lawyer and you have three paralegals coming into your home office, that's technically, you're not gonna have a separate building necessarily for that.
Yeah, and the one I think of is, is, was Sean Brooks's in Saint Albans, which was the garage attached to the house, that the upstairs of the garage was an office.
Yeah.
And so technically, it's not a separate building, but it's, he had, I don't know, six, eight, ten employees.
He has how many employees?
Oh, yeah.
He did.
It was a great, it's a great company.
Yeah.
Well, are they still operating?
Yeah, uh.
About to move, um.
They were for, I know when he moved, they stayed there, he might have sold the property now, I'm not sure.
Um, yeah, he's got a working office.
No, that's one of the things, the other is mixed use.
Yeah.
Should be in pretty much in, in just about every area in the town. Of a proper.
I think mixed, in my opinion, I mean, without looking at the definitions, the term mixed use to me. Seems so vague.
It is a vague, but it's a, it's in the definitions for people to come in and.
It is. And, and what I'm getting at is, is it's so vague, anybody can use it, like, in my opinion, I would, I would. Make the argument, mixed use can be considered a house with a home occupation, that's a mixed use. Like, it's my house and it's my home occupation, you know what I mean, like? Every time I hear that and see it, I, I understand that's not the case, but that's the way I'm thinking about it.
Well, a mixed use typically is residential with commercial, it's not two different types of commercial, it's not usually two different things, like. I mean, technically, like Lake Street. Uh, muffler there in Saint Albans has an insurance agency inside there, it's an auto repair shop and an agent, insurance agency, but. I don't think anyone considers that mixed use, you know, that's two different uses of that building, I think it's. I think the reality is, it's usually a shop downstairs with a residential upstairs.
Right.
The thing, if I look at it. Mixed use, basically, is a building or a parcel containing two or more principal uses. Which is otherwise allowed as permitted or conditional use in a district in which the building or parcel is located. That's terminology for that, then you go to.
So.
Home occupation, so basically, it's the same thing as a mixed use, you go to cottage industry, same thing as mixed use. And people.
So you need both, you need mixed use and you need the home occupation, and you need the. It to be a dwelling for you to be able to use a mixed use. Permit, so essentially, someone getting a, an, a home occupation permit should be getting a mixed use permit. You know, it shouldn't be.
Anyone gonna actually get, the other question you gotta ask, is anyone gonna get a home occupation permit? And are they ever, who's gonna enforce it if they do open the law?
I'm like, that's enforced, she's enforced weird, sure. Sorry, versus where?
I know, but I, when we, when we get to putting stuff in, I, I look at the. Plicability of like the enforcement too, because like, to your point, we've had enforcement mechanisms in here, we didn't change that, people never enforced.
That's, that's our next agenda, I don't know if we can finish this.
Um, so home occupation, we want home occupation.
Our, our town constable.
You want, you want mixed use everywhere, because. Or do we wanna refine the definition of mixed use?
Well, should they tie some way, should it be tied together so that mixed use, home occupation and. Cottage industry are basically all the same.
I'd, I'd have to research that, I think what you're gonna come into is like a mixed use, if we put it everywhere. Is now that three car garage I have, and I don't have three cars, I now have a mini storage business. People might have stored a friend's boat under the radar, but now they can store more, yeah. Like, I can tell you now, someone owns apartment buildings, if I had a four car garage, which a property I have one. And I had a mixed use, I would divide them all up, and they'd be hundred dollar a month storage units right now, for the business. And so you're gonna get that if you allow mixed use.
That's the reason why I bring these things up, because you have a zoning administrator deciding, they're trying to determine. Exactly what people are asking for and how it's gonna be. Exactly what people are asking for and how it's gonna be used.
Yeah. Like a whole occupation.
Say a storage unit wouldn't come under cottage industry?
No.
No, cuz it's not an occupation like where I have an employee, it's.
Okay.
It's like a warehouse, so like that, and I know that's a a an example, like that's something, or. I have a really big garage out back, I don't use anymore, so I'm gonna rent to an electrician to run their office out of there, that's a mixed use. Not a cottage industry or a home occupation.
The contractor, Jared.
Yeah, see, there's a lot of things that.
Yeah, and and it really comes down to how you wanna finagle it when they come in for a permit or how the zoning administrator interprets things too.
That's the basically, that's.
How how you propose it to the zoning administrator? And how crafty some people are, some people just aren't crafty around things like that.
So like. If I own Cory's electrical and I use my garage as my warehouse and office and it's on my primary residence. That's home occupation if no employees go there or cottage industry, maybe if you have an employer too. If I now rent that building to a different business on my home lot. You you know what I mean, I think that's where we run into.
Yeah.
The issues on those definitions. Right, like it it's who's using it for what use, not necessarily the use, it's. You know, there's that piece to it.
Are you satisfied with that, man?
Oh yeah, it's I'm just bringing it up.
No, no, you're, it's good conversation.
And the other one is uh. Homeowners' associations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote, I wrote a paragraph in here. To address that, cuz that that came up clear in that meeting and that's one of the things I wanna review with you guys. I actually tucked it in the subdivision section. Under stormwater management, because the issue that came up was around stormwater. Issues and at this point, the only time we're gonna have any ability to go to a homeowner association. Is at the subdiv- when someone comes in for the subdivision. You know what I mean, to create the ten or fifteen homes and that subdivision, so that's, I stuck it in there.
Yep, I mean science.
Yeah, draft.
And so ba- basically, I can bring that section up right now and share it with you. Um I just gotta get down to it, um. And nobody has this anywhere that I can find, so this is will be the first one to have this. Uh so there there's no language I could steal. Uh I looked like South Burlington, Williston, hoping one of them would have run into this. Um, this will take work on the town's end. The way I wrote it. Uh and so some of the town's gonna be responsible for this, but.
We should fly guy and make sure the select board brings that specifically.
Yeah.
You know, there's another thing that comes up with the homeowners association, we still have the one. Particular situation where there was a P U D planned and approved. And right now it's all up in the air because there's a ten acre lot that was set aside for the septic and everything else for the backup. And all of a sudden, that's not a part of the P U D. And the homeowners association, they're trying to push that through through. There is a situation where I believe when the. Development Review Board passed it, they didn't include. The extra land that was required to make it a P U D, so that they could have condensed housing. But now that it's out there, then you know whoever owns the property is basically giving it to the. To the homeowners association.
Yeah, I.
But it's. It's creating a. A situation that's not really too good, it actually should come back before the Development Review Board and have a sub. Subdivision of that portion, so the land is all together as one.
Yeah, I I I don't think we can write bylaws to that, it's kinda like the ex post facto on laws, I I don't know the legality of of that. Be honest with you, if something's already been done or a decision's already been made and then they have to come back and through under new bylaws, I. I think it's kinda like a similar thing, like sometimes you gotta let those bad ones go and then no no of those in the future, but. That that would probably take a a legal counsel too.
The other thing I get concerned about Cory on it is like. A homeowners association is one thing, and the homeowners own that piece of property and the association, that's fine. But I don't wanna come to the point like we are that the state of Florida has where. The developer is still a part owner of the homeowners association forever and ever and ever. Collecting an annual fee.
Yeah, well. A lot of them do that because the homeowners, I'm gonna put it bluntly, are too lazy to take over their own homeowner association and they refuse to take it over, I know. A few developers who've been trying to turn over. Their HOA and no one refuses to pay the fees or manage the permits, so they do charge the HOA the fee, so you need. You need someone to be the president of the HOA and if no, the homeowners are. The developers sometimes charge that fee because they won't take it over. So that, there's that.
Some of the things that have got somewhere along the way have gotta be. You know, taken care of so that it stops the aggravation of different people in these developments. And then they're not, they don't know about it when they buy property there, that's the hard part.
Yeah, they should sue their lawyers, I I honestly believe anyone who buys on a private road or a homeowner association didn't know this stuff should sue their lawyer because. That's their job to tell them, I I I, when I worked at Town of St. Albans. And people complained about living on a private road and having to fix their private road and didn't know what that meant, I go, you have to sue your lawyer. Is that if they didn't disclose that to you and what that meant? Or your Realtor, that's what that means, like. At some point, you gotta have responsibility for going into your own own piece and, you know, I personally would never buy a house in a homeowner association because of those. Or whether the stormwater permit, but I've been around this long enough to know, um. I I don't think we can, to your point. I don't know if we can write bylaws to come write out bad decisions people are gonna make anyway, cuz they see a home. Ward or any of that, like that's where. It just, we can't prevent it all. You know what I mean, there there's. All that, I think what we what we can do is what the language I got here. I wrote it under the stormwater, cuz that's gonna be the biggest issue and these folks are gonna come under. Is, I mean usually they know if they're on a private road, but if a subdivision requires a stormwater permit from the state or. From the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, a legal homeowners. Association shall be formed in the state of Vermont and maintained in good standing in perpetuity. The town of Swanton shall require the homeowners association. To file in an annual report which includes contact information. Of the executive committee of the association, proof of good standing with the state of Vermont and perm water. Permit and stormwater permit status and renewal dates. Well, this was rule acquire though, the town now is to make sure they do that. To make sure at renewal time, probably that they send an update to the homeowners that. They uh they need to renew their stormwater permit so they don't get in issues, um. You know, it's uh.
There's some administrative costs associated with it.
This is something that we should need to remember too when we're going through our enforcement, that that's probably a pretty big.
Maybe we get back to the zoning administrator.
Well, just we need to have some kind of punishment if they don't do it. Because if they're.
Have punishment, so you just gotta enforce.
But for for this though, because it's not a building permit, so that.
True.
And I feel that this is one Brady to have a pretty hefty.
By violations of this can be up to.
Uh.
Ten thousand dollars.
Exactly, because if they don't keep up on it, like the other ones, and then it ends up being the town, what's the town spending this year on? On those permits, forty thousand dollars or something like that? That's.
That's because of stormwater.
Yeah.
But they weren't keeping up with the stormwater because they didn't have.
But what Derek said, I need to prove that they're kept up with their stormwater.
So you get a few more of those developments like you.
And then this, this would allow. And then what I would do is a checkbox when you do a C O, which we don't hear, but like when someone bought, if I was the town and someone buys a property, there'd be a checkbox, is this located in an HOA? Yes, and then include the HOA pack annual report. In that, so when someone buys their home and gets their C O, they see they're in an HOA. Who the contact information is, I put the whole executive committee. Because someone might pass away or move out of the neighborhood and you still need advice, like you need two or three contact names cuz.
Hey Cory.
Yeah.
Christina had a better idea, instead of putting a putting a monetary fine on them for not keeping it up to date. Make it a part of Amy's compliance for sales and and if the HOA is not in compliance. Then the home is not in compliance, therefore they can't sell the house.
So the 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 only problem I have with that one Ross is you have ten neighbors. Nine of them don't wanna form the HOA, now you can't even sell your house to get out of there because they're all, and they won't form one and they don't care because.
And what do you do?
You're gonna do, so you're you're stuck there. If every home in the homeowners association gets a hundred dollar fine or fifty dollar fine. You know what, we do every home in the association. Something of that label, cuz then you're gonna be like, why am I paying this, and if all your neighbors like, cuz we don't want an HOA. Like eventually, you know what I mean, like. You're gonna have that, like, it's easier to get out, I just, I don't wanna. Up to you guys, you guys make the decision, but what I would point out there is. Say you are frustrated Ross and you wanna get out and sell and you just can't ever sell.
So.
Or you're. You know what I mean, you get held hostage.
Cory. Brian just walked through and I he's he heard HOA.
Yeah, and he stopped.
So he stopped, so bring you up to speed, Cory put in a clause in our P U D section.
No bylaw, uh in your subdivision section.
Subdivision, sorry. Uh saying that if an HOA is needed for stormwater, whatever purposes, it needs to stay in good standing with the town, it needs to. Continuously continuously stay up to date. And what we're talking about is how we make sure they stay up to date, do we make it a part of the compliance on a compliance? For a sale, do we make it a fine to all the house houses in the HOA if they let it go defunct? And because then there's gonna be stormwater permit issues.
Mm hmm.
If the HOA is no longer in good standing.
How do you enforce those fines?
Well, I think that should be something that the state forces personally, because the town shouldn't be getting in keeping track of HOA. The state under.
But if we don't, we're gonna end up with a wheel around or bottom court issue.
Right, but you can, you know, there's court cases going right now that you can't force anybody to. Form an HOA or even stay in the HOA. Under constitutional freedom of association. So I don't know, have you heard about that, Cory?
Yeah, and the three acre stuff is changing, a lot of lawmakers, not just Republicans. Some pretty key liberal ones are are really shaking.
Yes.
Taking down the state house, so we might be in a different environment four months from now, anyway. I think to the point Brian is we were asked by the select board and the village trustees to. To write this, to have something in there. Uh but we would be the first town that I could find that would have any kind of thing like.
I don't know how we'd enforce it. I mean, how are you gonna constantly?
Be good old.
Keep track of HOA?
Well, they have to register, so this thing.
Maybe we have though.
I don't know.
Couple dozen.
How many time it runs, isn't it?
Thirty, that many. I mean, there is, but you think about, it can't be more than thirty or forty.
Yeah.
So so what are we talking, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here. What are we talking if say it's on the zoning administrator's shoulders to to look into whether or not they. At an HOA meeting or their permit's up to date per year? You talking about a day's worth of work for someone to to check and make sure these HOA is.
Well, it's really where the work is gonna come in is making that list of HOAs, and after that, you can just have a checklist basically that. They didn't bring in their paperwork this year.
Send them a letter.
Send them a letter.
That's that's what I mean, are we talking, so what are we talking about?
Can the, does the list just know who has an HOA, because they would have land. Under an HOA, correct?
So I don't think it'd be all that hard to make a list.
That's what I'm getting at, and just.
Yeah.
Have it every six months. Someone, maybe it's the zoning administrator, that maybe it's whoever, like.
It's not such a problem where you have village water and sewer or water and sewer, the problem is outside of those areas where they have. Individual water and sewer accordingly to a. Be a part of that HOA fee. That situation that's going on right now, somebody wants to sell their house down there and there's no HOA. Uh. Draft or anything else, the draft, but it hasn't been turned over and there's ten acres out there that's part of the water and septic set aside. That I believe the Development Review Board, when they approved it, thought that was a part of a subdivision and it's not, it's just a line. Out of my lot. And it's not separated. And there's a situation where you've got uh eight properties in there, totally probably about six acres. That do not qualify as an acre for each parcel they wanna sell, where's the homeowners association? And where is there? Where is all the legality of having that all part of an HOA? And a part of that minor subdivision or is that subdivision?
So how are those houses, how are they even allowed to occupy those houses to to begin with?
Well, that's because it got approved. Accordingly. And it should have been.
Which development are you talking about?
Which one are you talking? Oh, I have a tank, oh yeah.
Um. Yeah, that's. HOA is even back when it was in the banking business, a real pain. For the banks. Because you have the developer that does the. Work and they run the HOA until so many units are sold that it's supposed to be. Self sustaining on standing on its own, and a lot of times that doesn't happen, that happened with Wheel Around. Uh probably Jones Court, Jones Court. Uh and that's the other, uh the um uh it's sort of happened to the Lauren, the country club estate.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Um.
I was dealing with.
Um so those are, these are not new problems, they went around for years, the um. Uh. Yeah, it yeah, you have somebody to, you know, locally, but.
No, you drive the.
Hmm?
Really, they drive, right?
No, they may have a little bit joy at some point, but. See that. It all goes back to when this estate and I put in a bill and I was in a legislature for Jones Court. In for an example, uh when is that? A village street that is no longer a development, it's hooked to water and sewer, this the village took over the street. And everything, and so it should all be part of the village system, so I put in a bill that said it's a stormwater system in that problem, that development. That's going into a municipal system that is properly permitted and operating, the stormwater permit. Is extinguished, it goes away, it's part of the municipal. Well, you can't do that, the state's gonna lose money. The state's gonna build, build another one of these things. But that's what they need to do.
I mean, the reality is, is you need a stormwater utility that takes all these over for all these folks anyway, but that costs half million dollars, you're gonna figure out how to raise that funding.
Well, that's the other, I mean, the village is in a position to do that because they run utilities, this the town is not running utilities and. So it's, they'd have to set up a whole billing procedure and everything else that does not exist. Uh town St. Albans has got it, as you know Cory, but is it fifty dollars a year per homeowner?
Yep.
Yeah, cuz my son had his bill and his refrigerator one day. Yeah, that's not that, fifty dollars a year, everybody pays it, you know, in development, everybody pays fifty dollars a year for storms. I mean, you know, I'm sure we get you get flat back from the orders on that.
Well, people, people didn't like it when we put it in, um. It's businesses pay more.
Right. Yeah.
State of Vermont pays for its roads. Town and village would pay for their roads, but what we found at least in Town of St. Albans. Is what we were paying, covered our our fee, covered what we were already paying for stormwater permits and other things, and we just moved those expenses to the utility. So. It really was a net. No new cost to the town grant, you know, uh. General fund, if you will, um. But yeah, I mean. That's the, and I mean, you guys don't have an MS four permit, but towns with MS four permits just end up rolling these in. And work with these homeowner associations, but yeah, it's. It it's an issue everywhere, I mean, it's not here, it's. You know, Town of St. Albans is raising that money to help out the Jones Courts of the world like they have, um.
Um.
And then to your point though with water and sewer. The reason St. Albans City has spent so much money, you have to separate stormwater from wastewater.
Yeah, who did that already?
Yeah, so it's not, there isn't a municipal stormwater system yet, it's individually on your parcels in the subdivisions.
Okay.
Well, I on this clause and question, I mean, you could probably put it in there, I just not know how that. Well, I on this clause and question, I mean, you could probably put it in there, I just not know how that.
I mean, it was, we can send it to the select board, it was asked for in that joint. So I just think that's. I didn't wanna ignore it, uh. But. But but to. Your point, I don't think a town can regulate an HOA beyond they need to do a report, um. I would personally question like Dylan's rules, like. This does the state give you the authority to do that?
Right, well, that's the other thing, yeah, the state can throw it out saying you don't have the authority to do that. But we can put it in and that's what the boards wanted.
And then and then I remind people municipalities are just very large homeowner associations. We ourselves, I don't wanna live in an HOA, people tell me what I can build on my property, what color my house can be. That's called a designer district and we're writing bylaws on what you can build on your land, so. You already live in an HOA, whether you like it or not.
Well, I've had one of our select board candidates that. Mentioned local control, I said, well, you can stop right there, there is no such thing as local control. You only have local control to the extent the state uses that.
Yeah, we're just bonds and they're seeing. Um, alright, I think we beat that worst.
Okay, I have one more.
Sure.
Quite one for Cory. Subdivision review makes. Section six dash one. In there you state. A major subdivision shall include. Any subdivision containing four or more lots. I believe that should be three or more lots.
Yes, we corrected that, that I corrected that from notes that I saw from Ross.
Okay, alright, so we're, I'm happy then.
No, you're right, that's why you're here Jim. We couldn't do this without you. Did you read my letter? Did you read my letter in the town plan?
The town the town report.
Town report, sorry. Yeah, we couldn't do it without you. I wrote one, I wrote it last year. Christina edited it for me, edited it. Well, I wrote it on my phone like. I was like, make sure that makes sense.
Oh, no, I didn't fix this one, I fixed driveways, thanks Jim, I will fix it right now.
Okay.
We kept every, we tried to keep everything consistent.
I remember we did the three.
See, because the driveway is hinged to that same thing.
I didn't, I didn't, uh the driveway one I fixed. And I took out, uh. I I forgot the term, it might have been like households or units, because again. With the new state law, we didn't wanna get into issues with like. You know. There are two single family homes and then someone adds an ADU and now there's technically three dwelling units and so now you have to meet this standard or do that. It has to be based on lot.
There's one, there's someplace in there is contains the difference is. In the driveways is your. B seventy one A and then your A seventy six standard. And then there's a B seventy one B standard for commercial driveways. It would be nice if that was in with the driveways.
I may go back to notes, um just to run through this. Um, actually Ross, you might have had a quick bathroom break and then we'll go, I just wanna go through Joel's comments, yours, we we've hit gems. And then kinda get feet, there was a couple of things I got stuck on, I just wanna ask some questions on. I need like two minutes.
Yeah, take your time, um. Maybe while we're. Waiting, we can talk about, you know. Our next meeting, get these back, next meeting, um. Gonna have to ship that, ship back evenings. Preferably earlier and better for me. Is there any day where like, let's see. Somewhere, what's that? Like a Saturday, I would be a bottle in here. Like, uh realistically.
Mondays and Wednesdays are the only days I can't do.
Mondays and Wednesdays, so and what what's a realistic time any other day? Five thirty.
So we gotta make sure this works with Andy because Jim's leaving after town meeting there.
That's what he thinks.
He's gonna take this down for. She needs a vacation.
I think you're a little late to the party.
Thursday the eleventh, does that work? Do you wanna do one in March or what's he, what did Cory?
I'm wondering if we try to do another meeting. Let's see what Cory's got going on first. What what do you think timeline with regional and stuff is Cory?
I mean, they should be able to do the map, I think, I mean, should be able to do it in two hours, but it'll probably take them two weeks.
Um, where I was going with that was I was wondering if we try and. Sneak in a meeting that the end of next week. But too early.
Seventh, there's already meeting, I can't do Fridays.
I can just, my timeline, just because we're heading to town meeting day is is really busy in Montpelier, like. The town meeting week. Best for me, I know you're going back to work, cuz.
No, no, let's, let's do.
I can plan a full day like to make any last edits in here. It's just like.
The reason why I was trying to do next week is Jim's leaving after town meeting day and I was hoping to have Jim. Involved in that last culmination, because I'm sure he's gonna have some ideas.
Uh, March sixth, which is two weeks from today.
That's the day after or two days after the town town meeting? You think we could have, is that too quick Cory? Five thirty on the sixth?
Does that work Andy?
I really sprayed all straight.
I'm gonna go on strike with you kids.
I told you, this is done in the morning and I'm tired. Till like three months.
I'm like, they're saying, but I haven't never break down and playing on.
The fourth is town meeting, the fifth is.
The sixth quarter now the sixth is.
Why is why is the slipper being on the fifth?
That's the reorganization, but it won't be election be long meeting, it'll be.
It could be.
Lot reorganized.
Depending on how the election goes, if there's a recount.
Not a recount, but.
All for a tear.
There's two. Two people, it could be.
Ross, you hired an assistant.
There won't be any major businesses there.
Five thirty on why, did you propose that because you'd be willing to leave after that?
Will you be here on the sixth? If we do it that day, you'll be here, I thought you were leaving that day.
No, I. Said it would be a good time to leave, but after I see where airline flights and everything else went.
Maybe go for a drive.
I just gotta take out a whole airline flights of all of a sudden gone from. Two hundred dollars to seven hundred dollars.
Are they gonna repair those planes that are currently?
So, okay, uh, five thirty on the sixth, in person here, let's let's. Uh, see if you can, can you reach out to Regional and tell them we're having a meeting that day and would like their stuff for that meeting? Is that reasonable?
They won't communicate with me, I'll write the email and have Christina send it, they don't, I'm not a town official, so they don't wanna communicate with me on it.
So just send me what you wanted to say and who to send it to. And I I will blank type carbon copy you in it.
Carbon copy Catherine on it too.
Catherine's the one who told me to. To have, you will to have someone else reach out.
No, I I know, but I'm saying if it's going to Greta, copy Catherine on it.
I thought you were technically, since we hired you, you are acting on behalf of the town.
That's what I, the argument I've made.
We're using their money to pay you to do this.
No, he's like the guy who's.
Yeah, this is all down in your.
Yeah, so.
Anyways. Uh, let's roll through your your few things for.
And so I'm just gonna show the list and then um. The things we touched, so the highlighting means was just things that we still need to touch. Our sixth district, uh or sorry, the. Residential, oh, we're gonna get rid of that district now, right, two six. Let me go up there. This is Joel's list. Going, I'm just waiting.
What's that?
I'm going, it's just being slow right now, um. I think this was in the resident uh conservation district that we just agreed we were gonna get rid of.
Yeah, I think.
Actually, that one brings up a good point, um Heidi brought this up, conditional use, we got rid of. Conversion of single family dwelling. Um, from a conditional use. Uh, and she asked why it didn't go into a permitted use. Cause most single family dwellings, uh if they're converted, it's to a two family or a multi-family. Well, that since it's a permitted use, like. The conversion of a single family, like. It's it's almost asking for the same thing and if. They wanted to add like a cottage industry or anything like that, they still gotta come in for a conditional use, so I didn't think. The act of converting a single family home, it was like converting to what? If it's to a two unit, well, that's already permitted, so you really shouldn't have them in. You know what I mean, there was no real reason in my mind to have it.
One or the other for multi.
Yeah. That's why I just didn't put it in permitted use, cuz I was like, I don't really think you need to do it. Yeah, we just got rid of this district, I think, yeah, so Joel's point there is moot. Cuz uh we just got rid of that district. Um, we have sixty five percent lock coverage in the residential district, not sixty. He was increasing, he might have saw like a fifty before we increased it, so I thought that was fine. I didn't change this part yet, I just wanted your feedback on it, but garden tool shed for lots with a hundred feet or less of frontage recommending allowing setback to be five feet. Are you guys okay with that?
We talked about that a lot.
Say that again?
Does garden shed setback?
Yeah, I don't remember where that came where.
That was Joel and I got.
And we said. We said no.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
We were fine with rear setback, but then with this, with like the sides was the issue.
Yep, that's fine, uh DEC to his point has to give a permit for this, for them to. Cause he goes, well, Vermont DC beside proof that an existing city is adequate for year round use, and he goes, I doubt it, they're gonna have to give a permit for year round use. Like they need, you need a wastewater permit. So anybody who comes in to convert a camp to a single family home. You just require the the state permit. That allows that. And they, you know what I mean, so. That's that in my mind, um. The three two, the art wall. Uh recommend adding something regarding art walls to the section or have a new section that discuss defines them, do they require permit? Any size limitations, it didn't write anything, do you want me to, and what do you want me to write?
Heather was supposed to research that, size limitations, eight by twelve. No more than ten feet off the ground to the highest point.
Eight by twelve though, is that?
That's three sheets plywood, that's what they have on one, two uh, it's a three vertical sheets plywood. Cory, do art walls interfere with the billboard loss, do you know?
That was what we talked about, nobody did.
I don't know. My my political side didn't because they were freedom of speech and political speech. Cause I always had people try to turn me in for the one at Sam Smith's corner. And we'd say, go ahead, force it, you're looking at a first amendment, right?
Well, I thought the ones in Swan, they didn't allow words because of that.
Yeah.
So an art wall can't have word?
I thought that's what they they decided.
Certainly can't advertise a business.
That's good.
Eight by twelve.
That's what we talked about too.
You have more stuff in there about signs and new houses.
So do you think we should add something in there for the art walls though, I think it should be some sort of.
There should be something.
It doesn't need to be uh two whole pages, but it shouldn't be a size.
Uh, that's what.
A setback.
Eight, eight high, twelve wide, ten foot tall. Fifty feet from the road, what uh uh structured setbacks in that district.
Can you do eight by twelve or something square?
What's that? Whatever the structure setbacks are in that district, that's a setback for the art wall.
You wanna allow.
Eight by twelve is as big as it can be.
Square.
What's that?
Ninety six square feet.
Okay, yeah, I just, if you wanna do it that way. Does that make sense Cory?
Yep.
And no words are advertising. Words, that can be a problem.
I don't think, I, I think Heather said that that was already a thing that they. When they have issues with them.
We're just lucky, those art walls haven't stirred as frivolous as they did at the beginning yet, again.
Well, that's why I think they got really works part of it, was because of.
So I will write that in for our next meeting. I mentioned I added a reference to adopted road policy and road takeover policy in both seven. Eight and nine, I could pull those up so you could see them.
Didn't we talk something about that too with this? You talked about Ross, but the language that we had was the wrong, it was the commercial one.
We we fixed that.
You did fix that, okay.
He's talking about the policy would take it over. Like Harvest Lane, what the policy is, if the town would ever take that over twenty years. And because of maple grove. Which in my opinion, maple grove is a.
Oh, shoot. Even all the way back. So right, so right here, I did, oh, this is where we did road design. All roads propose subdivisions of three or more lots shall be designed according to the Swan and Road ordinances, road standards. And road takeover policy if applicable. And then just let it go. So that they're mentioned in there and that gives them the freedom to change those as they need to. Take over only if it's a private road. That's why I have if applicable is there. Didn't change anything else and then. I think that was the only place it was really needed. So it has that reference there. They reference both those. He goes, a comment should be added to town or acquire a fee as part of subdivision permit for all new roads. Fee will cover the cost of engineer to visit like. I I mean, I kinda feel like that just needs to be on a form when you come in and apply, not in the bylaw, cuz those fees will change.
But I thought we decided the engineer. The engi- we were gonna put the engineer on them.
Yeah.
Last decision we had is, we wanted an engineer's report on anything that is. A private road needed. A stamp and what did I, what was the notes I put in there?
Three or more houses.
No permit for final lot without engineer stamp on road for three or more. Needs to call A seventy-six. Stanter.
I'll add that in.
I think we talked about. Um, instead of doing the last permit, I think, uh, we talked about at the, uh, fifty percent mark.
Cuz we were talking straight from the occupancy, and we decided that doesn't have any teeth, so it wasn't last permit. Basically, it depends on, it depends on this, how like the.
No more permits after.
Depends on the size of the.
Yeah.
Like if you have one like mid road, that was put in three sections.
Yeah, that's.
So you have to have it for each.
Each section.
Yeah.
The other factor is too, you take like the one that's up on Woods Hill Road there, where there's only three lots in there. And you allow them to come in, get the first two permits, now get the third permit, and the cul-de-sac isn't in, it wasn't even in by standard. That should be put in at the time they start that, before they even ask them the first permit, at least the base.
Will contractors do that?
Run into a situation like we did where they just was.
Well, they should, I mean, if you're building, if you're building, if you're not paving the road, it shouldn't, in theory, be from the beginning built a standard. Because they don't even wanna dig it up after it.
But the point this was, was the entire road does not need to be built.
Say, for like a, that's the problem with the, compared to three to a ten or fifteen.
Exactly.
The three, they're gonna do it all at once, but six or whatever more, at a cer- at a certain point, they're not building the whole road in. But you would think as they build the road, it would be. It should be built at standard, because they're not.
Well, but I think the other thing is, is if that road terminates at a cul-de-sac. And they're not building the road as, or they're building the road as they build the houses. The cul-de-sac then will not be in, there could potentially be houses. Complete without a cul-de-sac to turn.
And go down the road for ten years too.
So imagine, you know, like, uh, Maple Grove, for example, just putting in the houses as you went. Once you got past the first cul-de-sac, you'd have a hard time turning around up in there.
Yeah.
Um.
But he did put the cul-de-sac in the base of it.
He did, but if he had, if he hadn't, imagine it stopped after the first four or five houses.
Yeah.
You know, then there's no place to turn around, there's no safety cul-de-sac.
Right.
Um, that might need some more work.
So I just see builders wanting to put those cul-de-sacs in at the beginning because materials.
Way down.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, except Woods Hill, it makes sense, it was small enough, but if that cul-de-sac was, you know. Two thousand feet away, wow, don't make sense to put that road in. That's a lot, that's a lot of money carrying costs if you haven't sold those lots. Yeah, I don't know, that's hard.
Just like Maple Grove, they went up so far, they put the cul-de-sac in, then they came back in for another approval. They took the second phase, they went to the far end, they put the cul-de-sac in again, now.
Did they leave all those in after, did they take them out as they went?
Well, they're supposed to take them out, but it, so far, the town hasn't taken over, so they won't take out the ones in between.
But so, but they're maintaining them with September, there's three cul-de-sacs then?
There's three cul-de-sacs in there, yes.
And then, is the town doing to the first one?
Just to the first one.
The rest of them are private.
Right, right.
They wanted to take.
But it'd be just like the, the second one.
Third one, cuz that one was done.
The second one, if that gets approved, when they take over up there, they're only gonna take over the second phase. Because the third phase is.
It's like Harvest Lane, center line.
Yep, center line of the road.
Or Don's way where they go.
But they do have a cul-de-sac down there. You know, rescue, biggest thing is fire and rescue. That's the major factor.
Boy, and if you want the town to take it over, why don't we?
And yes, for, for towns to take it over too, but I mean, a big factor on even a private road.
So then let's do this. Let's say, uh, uh. Private, let's say a development with three or more lots. Needs to have. Needs to have a proper cul-de-sac in place before construction starts.
Sure, something in there, yeah.
Could, could we somehow tie it to?
The only.
Like every.
Have their process, three or more, if someone's building. Ninety-five units.
That's, that's, how do we?
Someone's not building that full road, they're gonna phase it.
So do we say every six needs proper turnaround?
That's what I was saying, if you could somehow set it up for so many full road, like every.
Thousand, well, what do they, what do we say the fire trucks have host for? What was it, seven fifty, five hundred?
I mean, they have a thousand.
Yeah.
What do we say the, the turnaround, but what is our pull-up?
Pull-up is.
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, I think.
So, if, if, if the subdivision road is more than five hundred feet, they need a proper fire turnaround. Every five, for every five hundred feet, does that make sense, Corey?
No, but if you're, if you're putting in a, cuz we're talking about driveway standards, is if they have this big. Development that they're planning in stages, that for every, every five hundred feet of road, you need to provide a. Stamp from the engineer at the road, cuz if you're gonna build five hundred feet development, then build five hundred feet then.
I, I think of Franklin Park West and, and St. Albans, honestly, it was building the roads that sent the first developer bankrupt. He built all the ro- he built way to the back of the lot and says something at the beginning and keep building out.
Yeah.
And that stuff's not cheap, you know what I mean, and so you're never. They have to build out the whole road, but to your, your point, you know, but you guys wanna stamp on it if they go two hundred fifty feet. In their development, and then go another two hundred fifty feet, cuz what, you're gonna do at five hundred feet, is the developer's gonna build the first four fifty.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting at is the five hundred feet is for a turnaround, Corey.
What we're, what we're trying to find is some teeth though, for this regulation, you know, to hold that last permit or whatever it is. Is that, how? Can you do it for whatever the last, I mean, if they're, if they're going in sets, they're gonna only permit it in sets. So it would have teeth if you held that last permit on the first section.
Yeah, but, but let's just say a developer is putting in twelve units, they may just get to that last one, never gonna do it, leave it empty. It's cheaper to leave it empty than try and do whatever they need.
But, but, why don't you just, I really, I feel like this should be more addressed in your road takeover policy.
Put it on the slideboard, perfect.
They need to decide how they wanna do that, and then. People will build to a standard, cuz no one really wants to keep a private road, and then if you buy on a private road. I mean, I know it's a town's responsibility, but at the end of the day, it's the homeowner's responsibility too, to check like the validity of the road, you, you know what I mean, like it.
Yes.
It, it, he, you can't.
But how do we enforce that, is, is what we're trying to figure out.
So in the town ta- road takeo- most. People want their road taken over, and so you say it needs to be built to this standard, and you need an engineered stamp, and that's in your takeover policy, and you don't take over a road unless you have that stamp.
Yeah, but the, the issue we had is a development that built a cul-de-sac half the size that it needed to be, there was a three lot.
Well, that wasn't in place, nobody was.
No, but I was saying, that's what we're trying to address though, is, is that they, they built it too small, when they got their certificate of occupancy. They were told it was too small, and their fix was scraping off two inches of topsoil and dumping stone on top of it and calling it good enough.
But that wasn't a big deal, because the cul-de-sac was already in place. So they wouldn't have gotten their permit, and with our new bylaws, they wouldn't have gotten their permit, because the cul-de-sac was in place. My worry is, a property where they're not gonna put the cul-de-sac in for ten years, but they're gonna build four houses. Before that cul-de-sac go in. Making, there's, there's still enough, like, uh, ability for something to turn around, like if that road is five hundred feet long. And there's no cul-de-sac, and like.
Basically, that would still be a private road until they developed it completely. So it would be up to them to stand with.
Yeah, but the private road still has to have the.
Still has to have the pull-off of the.
Yeah.
So if they build three houses on this end of it, and then go half a mile down the. End of development, the guy says, well, I want my house back there, so we're willing to build it back there.
Act two fifty has to look at anything with a road over eight hundred feet.
Private drive, yeah, pull-off is for driveway. Sorry, what's that, Corey?
Act two fifty, anything over eight hundred feet, um, requires act two fifty.
For private road.
Any, any road.
Yeah, but not a driveway.
Uh, no, that would be a combination of road and driveways at more than two thousand feet.
So a road or a driveway over two thousand feet needs act two fifty?
Yep. I mean, that, I just, people are gonna build to not have to go to act two fifty, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
You pull the road and then change the name of it, and then build another road off the end of it with a different name.
We're waiting that period of time.
Why do you know, for like Maple Grove, they put in the first second, and then they changed the name to. Pine Tree Lane, would that be a different road, so they wouldn't have to do act two fifty? Even though it's like straight shot on the same road.
No, I, I live on a road like that, there, I'm public to my house, and then like just shortly after my lot, it was Costas Court. But it was straight off Bluff Lane, and with E nine one one, they required Costas Court to be renamed Bluff Lane. They have all new numbers, so I don't think you'd pass E nine one one standards.
That makes sense, alright, I think we kicked that one. We gotta keep moving.
So I got here, road name sign, they asked. The town will provide a new, the first new sign, the town does not put the words private or PVT on any sign, I just put that in there cuz Joel asked us to.
So that down the road, they don't change the sign if it becomes town running.
Yep.
That's smart.
Neighboring towns put that on there, and people have asked for it, and Kevin, it, the town doesn't wanna have to order another sign.
If they go, if they go publicly the road. That makes sense.
There was somebody that asked for that to be on their.
Yeah, even so, the people don't want the words on the sign after the name anyway, so.
Yeah. Um, three or more, so keep rolling, Corey, I don't know if we can't do a resolution, but.
Yeah.
Um. Then we have just definitions, which we can get and talk to, then we get into more notes here, these are Jim's notes. I addressed.
But it was Jim's print, it was the things I typed for Jim.
Um.
Yes, I sent him all of your sheets to do notes.
I, I get the right-of-way piece, I guess, I was trying to find a hard spot to put that. Where in the bylaws we thought that should go, and if Jim had an idea. Unless we just put it in the definitions.
The hard part about the right-of-way is a lot where you allow a right-of-way to go through the. The size of the lot, today we're talking a hundred and fifty foot frontage, road frontage.
Yeah.
That right-of-way should have to be beyond that hundred and fifty foot right-of-way. In other words, they need, if they're gonna put a right-of-way through their lot, it better be two hundred feet wide.
The, the, yeah, the, the, the minimum lot sizes. Do not take right-of-ways into consideration. A right-of-way can't contribute to a minimum lot size, does that make sense, Corey?
Yeah, but what if somebody? So what if natural gas comes into a neighborhood that's already built? And they're trying to extend natural gas pipeline if the neighbors want it, like.
It's in a, it's in, it would be, that would then be done via the road right-of-way.
Okay, so on any new development.
Minimum lot size and minimum lot, um, coverage.
Can that happen?
Calculations, you know, right-of-way is excluded from those calculations.
And that's transmission line right over there.
What about, like? I'm, I'm gonna push you guys for a minute here.
I'm listening.
So some towns are saying wetlands should not count towards those minimum lot sizes, because even though twenty percent of that land can be built on. And you can put a house on it because of wetland, so we're, some towns are debating that, like they're gonna say, oh, because there's a wetland. That shouldn't, that wetland area shouldn't count towards the minimum lot size, um. And other environmental impacts and setbacks and so and so, so.
I would say wetlands, in my opinion, are ever evolving, and you can buy a house today, and twenty years from now, that's no longer a wetland back there for one.
You guys don't wanna, I just wanna be clear, you don't wanna contemplate any of that stuff.
Yeah.
Someone buys a lot and half acre is wetland, that still counts for the full acre, they can do whatever they want on that.
Yeah, it's a, they, that's useful land, that wetland can still be useful. Other than the fact you can't generally build, build on it. Where, where this would help is Harvest Lane, where the center, their edge of property is center of the road. That then there's a right-of-way taken out of that property depth, even though we tell them that property needs to hu- be a hundred and fifty feet minimum depth.
Yep.
They then take out twenty-five feet for the road right-of-way, or thirty feet, whatever it is. That law can, that right-of-way is like taken, same with. The, the gas pipeline on the backside, like, you could never do anything with that, period. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and then lots off, off the road, so again, we're.
So like Harvest Lane, if, if they made that. For example, those lots are two hundred feet deep, and it goes center of road to edge of railroad tracks. But there's a fifty foot right-of-way for the gas pipeline in there, and there's a thirty foot right-of-way for half the road on the front. That's seventy feet out of our two hundred foot minimum lock depth, or whatever it ends up being. At seventy feet, that's, that's over thirty percent of the law.
I get it, so I guess the road piece, so okay. You have a half acre lot in the village of, of, uh, Swanton right now, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, they wanna add housing and subdivide that lot into two quarter acre lots, because now we have to let them. And they give a right-of-way on the first lot to get to that back lot. And it's just a driveway, cuz it's two lots.
Yeah.
Are you gonna require them to have that twenty feet right-of-way or twenty-five foot right-of-way, whatever it is for that driveway? Isn't gonna count towards the minimum lot size of that new front lot, or width of that new front lot. So effectively shutting down any infill development in your village.
That would be.
It's not gonna count towards the minimum lot size. Um.
We're gonna go by district.
I get it on roads on subdivisions.
That's like, can we put it in for, for district dependent?
Look that, oh, I say we put it into roads and subdivisions.
So I, I get Jim's point, I just, if we do it too broad, you're gonna end up. We're gonna end up with Sean or somebody else in here mad at us, because now they can't. Get those two extra units on that lot, because now they can't get the driveway access. Or, uh, your parents own five acre, or not your parents, but somebody owns five acres and they subdivide off. Or two acres and they subdivide one off now, because they can, and maybe it goes out back and they give a easement. You know, an easement right-of-way.
Easement's different than a right-of-way now.
Are they?
The big problem, Corey, in my estimation is that we've gone down to the width of a hundred and fifty feet. We shouldn't take another fifty feet out of that for a right-of-way to go back and put two lots out behind. Cuz somebody's got a five hundred foot stretch back there or better, in order to, to qualify.
Why not?
Oh, you've got it, now you've got a lot up front that's only a hundred foot wide with a road going down through the. Door.
Essentially, that lot is useless, like, they're, they're making a minimum lot size of whatever, a quarter acre. But when fifty feet of its driveway, the road in the front, and fifty feet of its gas pipeline in the back. Twenty-five percent of that lot is. Twenty five percent of that lot is useless, what's the sense of having?
An affordable house. Someone has, that's the only house they can afford that has that running through it, no one lives next to the train tracks because they want to.
There's plenty of train people out there.
I'm just, I'm just pushing it, it's, it's your guys' policy decision, I just. I, I think you, you break it to, the problem we're trying to solve is one development. That we have an issue with or the board has an issue with.
Yeah, but there's others.
Yeah.
That whole center line, well, we could just solve it by saying the center, the, you can't have a property line, you the center line of the road.
Correct. And I, and I have a hard time with like. The electric transmission line like.
That would be taken out of it, you can't build in there. So, so there you want, right across.
But like, oh, he's where I live in, for an example. Our road requires buried lines. So we all have an easement in our yards to bury a line.
That's probably under the road easement.
Yeah, yeah, but it runs up on the other part, but like. The buried line on my lawn, I still mow over it, my kids play over it, it's not useless lawn, I just can't plant a tree there.
But that's a part of the road right away, I would say, that's part of the fifty feet for the road or the thirty feet, whatever it is, it's within that.
No, not, not in all the, not in all of them. I had to sign an easement with Vermont Electric Co-op. They, they didn't like the language, so I had, when they were doing, developing eight more homes past me. I, they, they. They had me re-sign something.
Yes, um.
I, I guess it's the point where we're. In a housing crunch, we're gonna eat up land just because a power line is running underneath it. Like, who cares?
Well, power line's different than a six hundred P S I eighteen inch natural gas line too.
Yeah. Yep.
That's a.
I'm sorry.
We're thinking water line. Like, okay, so now we're in a part of the town that doesn't, but now we wanna run a water line through someone's backyard. Like, I don't care where the water line is and what constitutes the water line, is it include the water hookup, the line that ten feet in front of my house? Where it actually hooks up? You see what I'm saying? Like, I think this is really broad. I think to Ross's point, we write it to the middle of the road. Or maybe we could do the gas line, but.
Specifically for that. There's a few more pieces of property along that gas pipeline now, there's another one, um. It goes up through when we get on this side of the river, like, that, that's all I ever see and, and there's, I would be willing to bet. Everybody in that development. I had no idea what that gas pipeline is, the. What it means for their house, what it means for a lot of like, people don't realize. Yeah, that's a time bomb.
Yeah, well, it's not only that, it's even the developer that bought it.
Yeah, but, but again, it's, it's different because you're, you're looking at. You know, places doing these methane digesters now and that's how they're gonna produce natural gas in the future is gonna be from cows and. There's gonna be new lines built and they're gonna have to come in and buy easements, but then now these. They can't because of the rule you wrote and how. That they can't take away from their property, that would put them under the minimum and.
Cory, but that line, that gas line requires a fifty foot right away. You get into where they start subproviding down and it's not required.
Yeah, but, so if it has a fifty foot right away, as long as the house isn't built in the right away, like it meets that standard. Right?
Well, when the guy steps off his back doorstep. And he's two feet from the gas or the right away and he can't do anything with it, what would you like?
I wouldn't buy that lot, but. All that has to be informed, that, that's again back on the lawyer and the selling developer and there's a lawsuit sitting there.
Well, it was never really brought out even for the development, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
The develop never should have been approved that way, period. That's what I'd like to see stopped so that nobody, the development review board will not approve something like that. In other words, that was a P U D, everything around the P U D should be completely cleared land. Everything, all facilities are going through there, electrical, water, everything sewer. Is in the road right away, not in the lots.
Right, but it's not, because at some point you gotta get the water and sewer to the house, you gotta get the electrical to the house.
Yes, you do, but it comes off of the road, you don't put. The electrical and water and sewer through three lots that serves four lots out back.
Typically, nine times out of ten, but if you look at Bowie, if you look at Gamash Lane. There is some utilities that run through other lots.
No, we don't.
Yeah, the sewer.
They run through, they run through the road right away and to the.
Oh, they're in the backyards?
Yeah, I know, they're in the backyard of. Set aside field or field, not in the lot itself.
But they have lines, so the house A to, to the septic has a, has a right away to that septic field.
Yeah, but the lots are set beside it, if you notice.
Does that affect if they, like on Harvest Lane where the. Lots go to the center of the road, they couldn't build closer to the road because the lot is the road, can they? They go from the railway setback. For the house.
Typically, they're supposed to, but they didn't.
But they use the fact they own the center road and it says a. Thirty five foot setback or fifty foot.
So, so since that's a private room. They were built, their houses are actually closer to the road.
Yes.
Which I, that's a safety issue.
Yeah.
It, it makes sense for me for the road, definitely. The gas stuff and the electric. I do agree with Cory that that falls upon, I know, I understand what you're saying, if people don't know it. We're not gonna legis- legislate ignorance.
That's the other thing, buyer beware is.
Exactly.
I, in, in my opinion, to a certain extent.
And, and if, and if people did the due diligence like they should, you're absolutely right, nobody would have bought that house that's two feet from a. Giant gas line. But people just see the house, they don't pay any attention and. In my opinion, as a town, we can't really do anything about that. And I saw one, I saw one in Fairfax, that was a main transmission line, like goes by your house. The, and I don't know how. The power company let them get away with it, the driveway is under the lines. And the houses, the lots set, so the houses are like a foot outside of that right away. And like, the house sits exactly like it does because that's the only image it fits. And I don't know how they ever got away with that with the power company not being like. You know, like you, you walk outside your front porch and there's a. Fourteen or twelve line transmission line over your head. I don't know how they, and like that one, if they ever moved it. Like they did, because there's houses on both sides, if they ever move that line like this one they're doing now, it's gonna be. On the edge of someone's house.
And sewer, especially when you guys build out, and, and I'm being a pain about this because like, I'm in Milton and we're working on a sewer and water project. Places that didn't have it, we are building through backyards so that we don't have to put in pump stations. And all that, it's not uncommon to have a sewer system running through someone's backyard.
Sewer is not as big, like, the, the gas is crazy because it could, the danger of it.
Gas and electrical lines.
Yeah.
But again, electric. I don't think electrical line, I mean, you have to use dig save to dig anywhere.
Yeah, but the problem isn't that it's a, it's a huge transmission line.
Supposed to.
But I agree with Cory though, there's just, we can't govern people to do the homework when they buy houses.
No, I agree with that, but you can also govern the. Development Review Board not to give approval for things that are out of whack.
So then, so then, Jim just, Jim just came up with our answer, Cory. We, we put it under the subdivision section that. We put it in stuff, the subdivision section that. The building envelope has to, whatever we want them to be, those setbacks are based upon. Those things and it doesn't necessarily affect anything else. Does that make sense?
Well, and, no, because you want. The road one I get, I think what we do in a subdivision is that the road needs to be its own lot. Right, like, it can't be, it can't be, uh.
Well, it should be its own law, if they're, if it's a private road, it should have an H O A, it should be its.
I think it's subdivision of more than, I think it's subdivision of more than three. Because I do think, and I, you can disagree with me, but I just look at the way things cost now. If you're, if you have a kid and you have a two acre lot and you could subdivide off the back of the lot and allow a driveway to run through your lot to allow your kid to have a. House out back and you can give them the land for free and that's the only way they can afford a house, that should be okay.
I agree with that because, and over three makes sense because um that's a road anyways.
Right.
Under that's driveway, so a driveway you would, but if it's over three, then the road should be on its own lock for the H O A.
Right. That's how I would write it.
Do you agree with that, Ross?
Sorry, well.
Do you agree with the road? Thing over three, which I think we, because it's not a road until it's three.
Right, yes.
Which it should be for the H O A part anyways.
Yeah. Cause that's where it's, that's where Bud's garage is. So we wanted that connected with that up there.
Are we moving on?
The garage?
No.
I, I, we had a, a less of a definition of agriculture, I did add Jim's definition in. Whatever you guys wanna choose for the definition, I'll just pull them both up. Uh, we originally. Brought down to a stashman that grows crops, raises animals, harvests timber or harvest plants or animals from their natural habitats. Jim proposed commercial production of crops, including but not limited to horticulture, viticulture, floriculture, vegetables, berries, grain, hay, straw, dairy, maple. I can't pronounce that word, uh, animal products, seed, Christmas trees and livestock or a combination thereof, when not exempt from zoning by. Twenty four V S A, forty four thirteen and ten V S A, six zero zero one.
So the only question I have about that is when it says commercial production.
Yeah, I had the same question, but, but the.
You can be considered agriculture if you're not selling your. Products.
I guess, I guess the question I have is what are we missing in that original? Thing that the second one offers. Cause like, I get like maple, but that, I would consider that harvesting um plants. You know, a tree's a plant.
Why are we defining agriculture again?
Cause the state of Vermont actually have a good definition of it.
And we just defer to them.
They don't have a good one that we can defer to. There's a couple different definitions. I like his point about like Christmas trees, like, I mean, I consider that harvest timber. But I get if we need the clarity.
I just testified this morning Cory for the. Senate Judiciary Committee on the Right to Farm Bill.
Yep.
Um, they have a good de- uh. Definition that I would say is pretty good in there that maybe we should look at, that it's pretty similar to the second one that's here.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll pull that language from that bill.
The, the one I read was from the old bill, but I think the new bill is the same, they just changed some other stuff, but.
The, the bill introduced by, by Senator Parent four years ago or the bill by, cause is it the new one or is it?
I read the old one, I didn't have a copy of the new one, but I read the old one beforehand and that had a good definitions, I didn't.
Is it, is it the one Sam Douglas just put in this year or is his the new one?
This is the new one.
Okay, so you want, I put this bill in four years ago when I was a senator, is it from that bill?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I don't care which one, I just wanna make.
I know, the, the one I read would, would have been yours. I didn't read the, who proposed it or who, you know, put it through.
Yeah, I just wanna know where to look, so I'll pull that. I, it might not have changed, I just wanna make.
I don't think, I don't think that part of it changed.
Hold on, I'm still struggling to wrap my head around the fact that we need to define agriculture because the state, we can't just defer to the state. Wraps. As defined by state wraps.
But there's different, the required agriculture practices that not. Retain to everyone. Based on size, if you have five chickens in your backyard, you don't have to call them wraps.
Well, that's what I'm saying, agriculture, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, but having five chickens in your backyard, is that agriculture, agriculture is growing three pot plants in your backyard agriculture, the state?
No. So that's why I don't care. It's not. But if you meet, if you meet one of those farm agricultural designations.
Yeah, but the problem, and this is where we talked about this morning in our, in the testimony was. If you have. Three chickens in your backyard, your neighbor doesn't like the smell of chickens and they sue you. Are you protected under the Vermont Right to Farm Bill? That's where it, it's, I agree with you, it is a mess, but it's. Producing food.
And if that right, if that right to farm bill passes, we might have a legal definition of agriculture, we can use Ross, it's just.
I didn't know, there was a farmer that got sued in Vermont because their neighbor did not like the smell of the manure and they lost.
Yeah, and their na- and their neighbor won, a Houston, a Houston.
He was doing nothing wrong, he did not break any rules, he didn't have runoff, it was. He spread his field, that guy didn't like the smell, and he sued him and he lost. How? That's, I had, I didn't know about that. There was a, another guy that testified in Southern Vermont that walks his cows down a dirt road, three quarters of a mile of the pasture. Cow craps in the road and. All this, everything around is owned by how state people second homes and like, lost their mind on it, doesn't he got a camera on his fancy car?
Well, it's very similar to the one that came back before the Development Review Board here a couple of weeks ago or three weeks ago.
Yeah, the very, I, I brought it up in that meeting, I brought that up in the meeting.
Is costing the person that owns the property to defend themselves.
Well, she spent forty thousand dollars on lawyers. Yeah, it's been three years in court and, 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 and I, and I brought it up in the testimony with that one. I said, the, the worst part about this one is, is in my opinion, I haven't, you know, read the court complaint, but from talking to her. There is no complaint other than he says she's not a farmer.
That's right.
But she has all the paperwork from the state that says she is.
Paperwork is basically boiled around using the chemicals.
No, I asked her, I asked her, I thought, I thought the same thing, that I said this must be a pesticide issue. And I looked up where the guy lives, I'm like, it's not even close, it's not, it has nothing to do with pesticides. Cause I thought the same thing, it's just the guy doesn't like the business there. And so now he's appealed it, he, he, he challenged it in court that she was a farm, finally, the court. Said, this is a farm, she has the paperwork, so then he challenged it to the town. For the permitting and the town rightfully said, we don't regulate agriculture and now he's appealed it to the environmental board. It's just somebody that has money that just is mad about it, that's gonna.
A waste of money.
That's like the strawberry.
So the other thing I didn't know until I learned today, the way, that's why they're trying to strengthen this law. Is the way that the Right to Farm Bill is written. Is because I've spread manure on my land forever, say, or something. You can't do anything about it, but I changed practices, now I'm injecting my manure. No, you can sue me because it's new. It's different.
And you're within so many feet of wells and so on and so forth.
But, but just, just because I changed my practice. Now technically I haven't been performing that practice since before you were there.
Which, which the state of Vermont might have required you to change your practice, especially in the spreading versus injecting.
For, for, yeah. For water quality.
That's what the topic was, is a lot of these things that are changing are water quality based. And that, that was a big one of the smell is. A lot of states, you, there is no spreading ban, but in Vermont, we have to have six months of storage, so obviously. There's gonna be smell because it sits there for six months.
So there's states that don't have spreading?
New York doesn't, New York has a much less restrictive, New York, if, if there's no smelling, you can spread you around.
Can they blow off the fields?
There's a lot of states that don't have.
Like, I never thought about it, I never had a reason to think. We're, yeah, I got about twenty minutes before I gotta get ready to head to an I.
Yeah, I gotta be in a meeting in a little bit, um. From Heidi, um I'll look for that other definition, we'll go over agriculture again. She'll look the map, they support the increased lot coverage, um. That conditional use was a conversion of single family dwelling, not less than per use, is this no longer allowed? No, but. If a duplex, a three unit and a four unit, whatever is allowed, you don't need the conversion. And then we talked about the TSA piece. That we're not eliminating it now because of these issues they're raising here.
Yeah.
That way to, we have a clear example that we've listened to them in that meeting and. All that, so that that kinda brings us to the changes are now, my recommendation is for our next meeting is. We're pretty close to decide, so I'm gonna work on the formatting and all the tables and. Obviously, we can make a few changes, but I feel like we're pretty much at buttoning this thing up and then the map and then we should be good.
Put together, um, the email for Christina to send to regional please. Christina, copy me on that as well, if you would, um, and that's.
Christina, that'll come later this evening, I'm in meetings from one to like four. And then I will write, I will write some options for those road.
Yeah.
For us to discuss next time.
What's up, Cory?
I'll write the language for the subdivision on roads. And then we can add.
Yeah, you know our intent, you know what I mean, you know what we're trying to do and.
I just think that one was broad cuz I think we're gonna have sub, I I actually think what Oliver and I came through in that discussion of any. Subdivision of three or more lots. I think we can write to that and then it takes away the village issue if someone wants to subdivide a singular lot off the back of their lot to add. You know, if they got a deep lot, right? I I get some people may not like that, but like. You start enough towns start doing that, the state's gonna take that right away, I mean, I'll I'll be blunt with you. The housing organization I I have will go in and get the state to change laws like that. Cuz the whole point is to get more dense built homes and village centers and other thing, you know what I mean? So they're not gonna.
Yeah, but this isn't about in the village center, this is about in the, you know what I mean?
But if we put that in the wrong section, it would apply to the village.
True, so maybe we just put it in districts.
That's why you're talking about doing it on three lot roads.
Subdivisions or more. Subdivision section.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I had said in the subdivision, but maybe only for certain districts.
Yeah, oh yeah, okay.
Our one district, really.
Right.
That's basically the ones where you're gonna have it all.
Yeah. Subdivisions in R one, uh right of ways don't count for da 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 setbacks. Um, lot size, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Good. And I think that'll, cuz that that is the bulk of the issue is like, we we've got a few subdivisions and there's going to be more and. These lots, they look like quarter or three or third acre lots, but realistically, they're not, you know?
And then, and then maybe what I'll say is any required utility. Right away, so the natural gas requires fifty feet because of the equipment they have to bring in there to work on it, right?
Yeah.
Who's running it under underground wire. It's very different than an underground transmission line, so like, I think we just. Any.
Maybe maybe we throw it, then maybe you define it this way, anything governed by BSB.
Yeah.
Because that that gas pipeline, overhead power lines, all of that stuff would be. I I don't know, you know, the proper wording, but if you look at it in that regard, anything that is not locally.
Right, cuz the way I read it, I would argue, and I know it's not meant, but like the the ten foot of. Of of sewer line that has to run to my house, I would say. That that. That portion of land doesn't count towards the lot, even though it does.
The sewer lines that you're talking about would be like in PUDs where the people have got maybe a quarter acre at the most.
Right.
And. There's no reason that cannot cannot stay in the road right of ways or the right of ways that they have.
But but the way it's written, the actual pipe that gets from that line to your house is considered.
Okay, then that lot shouldn't be moved, in other words, it should not be running where they're gonna have to put.
You can't cuz you still need to get this.
But it doesn't have to be in the privately owned block.
No, the service line does, but the problem with what you're talking about is that someone's just gonna run that line and dead end at the last house and call the whole thing a service line.
Yeah.
It's where people are.
So maybe we we look at it as, um, interest state. Utilities or whatever, like non, um. What's the word I wanna use, non, uh consumer utilities, right? So where I'm going is Velco, natural gas. Those now, I was just looking at the map too and I'm just curious, the the railroad owns the actual railroad bed. That's not a right of way, they that is owned land, the railroad has those trips, okay, so that's null and void.
Yeah, mo- railroad up until like McDonald's was a large, maybe still is, like the largest landowner in the United States.
Yeah, and it's literally what a thirty foot strip, but it's like millions of miles, not millions, but. What else? You guys got anything else? See you in two weeks.
Alright, sounds good, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, thanks Cory. Um, make it their next meeting.
Yeah, I didn't entertain a meeting, any public comment, anybody else there wanna talk?
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make the motion to be adjourned.
Now second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Excuse me, all those in favor, see. Alright, all she carries, meeting adjourned at one twenty-one PM.